At 7:00 PM, Deb, do you want to start the recording or do I need to do that these days?
It should be all set.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
So with that, I'll call to order this regular meeting of the Town of Leadyard Plan and Zoning Commission. It is Thursday, May 13th at 7:00 PM. This is a remote Zoom meeting and it is being recorded. I'll go ahead and call the roll. Ms. Scanlon.
Present, sorry.
No problem. Mr. Boudreaux.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood. Thank you, Mr. Cherry.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Evans.
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Kapon.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. And the Chair, Mr. Woody is here, I understand. So all members are present, so I'll be seating no alternates tonight. With that, I'll move to citizens' petitions if any citizens here wish to speak on any non-agenda item. I invite them to do so at this point. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? Make sure you unmute yourself and introduce yourself with your name and your address and then speak away.
How you guys doing tonight? I'm Patrick and this is my wife Sarah.
I'm Sarah.
We were added to the agenda, we're interested in a piece of property in Ledger and we were under the understanding that it would be presented tonight.
Yep, yeah, you're on our agenda. I do regret to admit you're at the end of our agenda, so I'll apologize in advance, but you are on our agenda and so we'll, we'll get to you.
Very good.
Thank you. Hearing. Hearing none others, we will move on to next, I have no additions to our agenda. So we will start with the public hearings and applications. So first, we will continue and forgive me, I have a second screen off to the side, so if you're stuck looking at the side of my face significantly, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt?
Please, Mr. Attorney.
Number one, acknowledge that Attorney Carl Landalina is here and joined us.
Okay.
So just, just for the record, our town attorney is with us today.
Thank you, Carl, I didn't see you show up, but can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Great, and we can hear you, thank you very much, thank you for being here.
Of course.
So first, then we will reopen the public hearing for application PZ number 20-06 SUP at 7:03 PM. This is for 20 Lorenz Industrial Parkway for the modification of a previously approved special permit SUP 4515. Got some background noise, so if you could mute your line, I'd appreciate it. Deb, I believe we are up to exhibit 28, is that correct? Whoever's got a conversation going in the background, please mute your line. Deb, are you able to mute all lines?
Yeah, I can.
Can you mute all lines and then unmute me, please? Thank you very much, Deb. Okay, with that, I believe in the previous meetings, we read exhibits 20 through 27 in, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so starting with exhibit 28, exhibits 28, 29, and 30 are a three-page plan set revision April 23rd, 21. Note that these are superseded by exhibit 39, which is an updated plan set. Okay, exhibit 31 is a memorandum from Groton Utilities to Liz Burdick and Ellen Bartlett, CLA Engineers. It contains five points which they would like addressed in the existing plan. Exhibit 32 is a memo from Ellen Bartlett at CLA Engineers to Ray Valentini at Groton Utilities, Eric McPhee at DPH, and Liz Burdick. It contains a three-page plan set with the note attached are the revised plans addressing the Groton Utilities review comments and a summary of the responses to the review comments. Exhibit. Exhibit 33 is an email from Ellen Bartlett to Ray Valentini and Liz Burdick with a note that the MOU is attached for review and comment. And the memorandum of understanding between Groton Utilities and Generation for Realty as proposed is attached. Exhibit 34 is an email from Ray Valentini of Groton Utilities received on April 27th, 2021 to Elizabeth Bartlett. Ellen Bartlett, I apologize, at CLA and Liz Burdick. That notes that one note should be changed on the previous plan, note one on sheet one should be changed to a memo of understanding must be agreed upon and signed prior to any construction takes in place on this site. Otherwise, the plans dated 3/23 have addressed our comments. Exhibit 35 is an email from Ellen Bartlett at CLA Engineers dated April 27th, 21 to Ray Valentini and Liz Burdick and Eric McPhee. That states the attached revision as requested is attached as well as including a reference to Eric McPhee signing off. Exhibit 36 is a memo from Steve Maslin, Public Works Director of Leadyard dated April 28th, 2021 to Liz Burdick. States, I have reviewed the plans and drainage report for the subject application, I find that it meets the water quality and other best management practices for stormwater management. The plans have also been revised several times to accommodate related runoff concerns of Groton Utilities. Exhibit 37 is the public hearing notice originally posted on April 29th, 2021. It states, application PZ 20-06 SUP, 20 Lorenz Industrial Parkway applicant property owner Generation for Realty LLC. Agent Ellen Bartlett, PE CLA Engineers Incorporated for modification of previously approved special permit SUP 4515 for limited recycling facility. Public hearing continued from April 8th, 2021. Exhibit 38 is an email from Eric McPhee at Department of Public Health dated May 5th, 2021. Stating, the biggest concern that I had was the property owner's refusal to allow Groton Utilities on his property to allow them to conduct their required watershed survey inspection. I had been discussing this issue with Ellen Bartlett and was wondering if there's any, if there was a way to incorporate an understanding of the statute and regulations. CGS Section 25-51, RCSA Section 19-13-B102, and RCSA Section 19-13-B32 into the plans or via the possible MOU. Since the proposed and historical use of this property poses a risk to the water supply. And because of its close proximity to an active reservoir, it is critical that Groton Utilities be able to inspect the property at whatever frequency they deem necessary to ensure. One, there are no violations of RCSA Section 19-13-B32 or other source protection laws. Number two, BMPs and onsite systems, stormwater, etc. are functioning properly and maintained. And three, only permitted activities are occurring on the property. I'm happy to discuss if you would like. Exhibit 39 is the final three-page plan set. Exhibit 40 is the bond estimate for ENS for a total of $6,200. Exhibit 41 is a memo, a five-page memo from Ellen Bartlett at CLA Engineers to Liz Burdick. Which is a narrative of the proposed development at 20 Lorenz Parkway. Exhibit 42 is an email dated May 12th, 2021. That states that the latest revisions addressed DPH's concerns. Exhibit 43 is dated May 13th, 2021, which is a memo from Liz Burdick, Director, Land Use Director. And when we get to it, I'll let Ms. Burdick talk through this, it is a three-page memo. Last exhibit 44 is a, is the deep approval of permit transfer dated May 13th, 2021. Giving notice that the license has been transferred from Mark Sawchuck to CWPM LLC. Okay, and that is all of the exhibits I've got. Ellen, are you able to hear us? Ms. Bartlett, can you hear us? I can't hear you.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is for the record, Town Planner Liz Burdick, can I quickly summarize my staff report?
Yeah, I wanted to have you and Carl give a quick history of where, you know, where this is and what context the commission should consider. This application in context with the previous applications and stipulated judgments.
Okay, and I can just sort of also sort of, you know, lay out all of the revisions and whatnot that went back and forth as well too. This was, you know, it took a little while, but it was a lot of work between a lot of different people, so. We finally, I think, got it to be where it needs to be, but certainly if Ms. Bartlett wants to make a presentation, that's, that's great. I don't know if she can hear you, can she hear you?
So my preference would be before Ellen gives any presentation that you provide the, the history, because I think it's important for the commission to understand how we should consider this in context to the previous applications.
Okay, so as usual, you know, I write a small novel when I do my staff reports, I think it kind of sort of keeps me in the loop as to, you know, what's going on in the application at any particular time. But, you know, as you know, it's Twin Lorenz Industrial Parkway, it's, it's in the CIP zone and the use of the property is industrial park use. And so that's why we're here for a special use permit. Just as far as existing conditions, for, for those of you who weren't on the commission, I know we went over this very quickly at our last meeting, but the property was formally occupied by Sawchuck. Who had began conducting recycling activities without the benefit of proper permits. And enforcement action was commenced and including court action. And at some point, there was a stipulated agreement and the applicant applied for special use permit to conduct a limited recycling facility. And that was granted on April 13th, 2000 and. The, I have 17, but why do I think it was 18? So I apologize if that, I'm pretty sure it was on April 13th, 2018 that the commission approved that special use permit, because it was right before I came on board here in Ledger and I came on board in 2018. So what happened was the, the special use permit and the site plan were never filed. So, and before Mr. Sawchuck could comply with the conditions of the special use permit, he sold the property to Generation for Realty LLC. And Generation for Realty LLC cleaned up the property and gated it. And, and then, you know, as you know, last year, they came before you to, they decided to go forward with the limited recycling facility, but needed modifications to the site plan to fit their needs. And we did have a little snafu, I would call it, in the middle of this application process, where Driven began conducting a salt, road salt operation there, but that. That violation was quickly dispensed of. Thank you very much, Kyle, did a great job, we got this done, we got the salt out of there. So we're now, we're back on track, so we have a plan that has to be reviewed by Groton Public Utilities, Department of Public Health, Leadlight Health District, the Town Engineer and myself. So I can tell you that there was quite a few planned revisions that went back and forth between Groton Public Utilities and CLA Engineers and Groton Public Utilities. In the exhibit, I can't recall which exhibit it was, you know, did in fact, oh, on. 4/27/21 approved the, the plan set. So Groton Public Utilities at this point has approved the plans as submitted and they've also approved a draft memorandum of understanding regarding maintenance. At the site with regards to the watershed, so Groton Public Utilities is all set. The Department of Public Health also had an open investigation, that investigation is now also signed off on by DPH, Department of Public Utilities. The, the email that you read into the record regarding access to the site. I asked Ms. Bartlett and she did add a note to the plan set that basically mirrors Mr. McPhee's request. So that has been added directly onto the plan set and with this special use permit, if it's approved, the special use permit gets filed on the land record with its site plan. So that will be forever memorialized on the land records, all of those notes regarding the memorandum of understanding. Are, will also, you know, they'll be memorialized permanently because they're on the plan set now, it's not just a condition of approval. It is a condition of approval, I've recommended, but it's, it's, it'll also be filed. Leadlight Health District, so Leadlight Health District apparently is so far behind. They did one initial review of the application and had some comments and Ms. Bartlett revised the plan to meet their comments and re-submitted the application to them, but they have not yet reviewed that. I did speak with Wendy Brown Arnold and I did, you know, at the end, I have a series of conditions of any favorable approval. She said that, you know, certainly before any zoning permit is issued to start any work, she would need to sign off, but at this point, she would be okay with her sign off being a condition of approval. And I have an email that I received after I left the office today from her stating same. So that's Leadlight Health District, the Town Engineer signed off on the drainage calculations as you read into the record. He also today verbally told me that the $6,200 bond estimate appears to be adequate for the site erosion and sediment controls. Of course, that submitted prior also to the issuance of a zoning permit. But he hasn't given that to me in writing it, but I had in my staff report recommended that as a condition of approval too. The, again, the violation, I'm kind of going down my staff report here, the violation of the use of the site was completely resolved on February 25th, 2021. When Kyle conducted a final inspection of the site and determined that all of the saw, all of the equipment. The tank that they used for mixing the saw, all of that had been removed and erosion and sediment control had been installed per the direction of the town. So, you know, certainly, I guess, you know, I could, you know, sort of go through conditions that I recommend for any. For any favorable approval quickly unless Attorney Landalina, would you like to sort of add on to the, the site history and the enforcement action before I do that?
You're muted, Carl.
Okay. So not really at this point, I, I think Liz's report accurately summarized the history. As you know, we had. A prior owner. Was reluctant in, in, I guess, following the rules and enforcement action ensued and. As a result, the special permit, which was applied for subsequent to our enforcement action and granted by this commission, was made subject to a number of conditions. And those conditions. Were required to be satisfied prior to the filing of the special permit, which is a little bit unusual generally. And, but I think the commission agreed, you know, three or four years ago, that under the circumstances. That it was appropriate to, you know, put those conditions on in that manner, so that's why the special permit was never recorded. Because the prior owner, as I understand it, didn't finish taking care of all of those conditions which were required by this board. To be satisfied prior to the recording of the document. So I think when Liz talks about conditions, some of which are, are the same as what had been imposed last time around. That those conditions are going to be satisfied after the filing of the special permit. But prior to the issuance of the zoning permit in the normal course, and that's typically how you would, would deal with those. We, we did deal with Mr. Prior Owner somewhat differently, so that's the only, that's the context in which. That application was approved back three or four years ago.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, yeah, I think we were in a position where we felt like we needed to do something slightly unusual in order to get to compliance. And so I think it's a good clarification that, that isn't the, the, the way that these conditions are intended for this application, so that's, thanks for that. Ms. Bartlett, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you. Do you want to give a presentation of what's being proposed here?
Yes, Liz, can we put the sheet one of the plans up on the screen?
Deb, is it possible for you to pull up exhibit?
39.
Yes, 39, thank you. Thank you, Nate. And sheet one should be. Sheet one. To be right there. There you go.
Okay, so I'm not going to talk about the history of the site, because I think that's been very well explained already. But the site consists of a two-acre lot that's at the end of the Lorenz Industrial Parkway cul-de-sac. Won't talk about what's happened in the past, but the, the new property owner has filed the site plan, a modified site plan to bring, his goal is to bring the property into compliance. They also own and operate CWPM, which is a waste removal and recycling company, and they own several sites throughout the state. So they're not proposing to use this site as a haul site, it's going to be strictly a facility for processing and bailing cardboard and paper products. All the processing and the storage of materials will be within the existing building. In the past, the, the property was used for storing trucks and for hauling, they're not going to be doing any of that. The only time trucks will be on that site is when they're loading or unloading materials and taking them off-site, so.
Clarification, when you say processing in the building, you're speaking of the main building in the center of the site, not that small existing garage in the corner.
No, the small existing garage up there in the north, northwest corner will just be used for storing equipment that they might need for recycling. There won't be any maintenance in there, they're not going to be storing trucks in there, it's just random equipment that they want to get out of the way. And also on the main building, you'll see the little jog on the east side that was added later on. It's, it's built as an office space and they're going to use that as just office space for the facility, they'll keep their records there and invoices and things. But the main thing is the difference in what was, how the site was used before and how it's going to be now, it's not a storage of trucks and we're not going to be hauling. Waste to and from the site, they'll just be bringing in paper and cardboard, it'll be loaded into the building, it'll be baled, processed and baled, and then a different truck will come. Load up that truck and take it off-site, so it's a much simpler process now. There is.
Excuse me, Ellen, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question just for clarification?
Yep.
One, one question, I just want you to clarify, I know you're doing paper, you're doing cardboard, but there was in the narrative. And I, and I listed it in my report that there may be some recycling of clean construction debris as well. So I don't want to limit it to these two things that you're saying here, because in the narrative, it did say they're going to be doing some clean, clean construction materials. So I wanted to add that, maybe you could clarify that?
That is allowed in their DEP.
Yes.
Their deep permit, still call them DEP, but that, that isn't allowed use and there is, they may in the future do some very clean construction materials in the building. Presently, the plan though is for cardboard and paper materials only.
So I guess, I guess where I am here is if the, I, I want, if, if that's what they want to do. They should state it for the record now, so that it's inclusive of the special use permit. So they may be doing it in a year, but this, if it's not included in the special use permit, I actually had noted that in my conditions of approval. So I just want to be, I just want to clarify that there's going to be paper, cardboard and clean construction materials only at this point.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, clean wood, clean construction debris and the recycling of cardboard and paper, those are the four things that'll be allowed at the site or that will be conducted.
Yes, that is, that is what we're applying for. And that's what the plan is. I did want to mention that there is an existing tank on the site that the previous owner used and we've noted on the plan that that is to be removed. And there's also a con, convex box that kind of sticks over the property line, that is noted on the plan to be removed also. So that'll be cleaned up before, before we file everything.
There's also an outdoor wood burning fireplace or furnace that's going to be removed?
Yes, that's noted on the plan as well.
Great.
That kind of sums up what we're planning on doing here, is there any questions I can answer at this point?
So I, I just have one quick question about traffic flow. So the, is the, previously, under the previous plan, the, the traffic flow essentially circled the building, if you will. So it came down around the southwest side, so it looks like your primary access is really going to be on that main drive and on the eastern side where it's paved. So trucks are going to come in there, pull up to the garage, unload and then exit the same way, is that the print plan traffic flow?
That is correct.
Okay, and so the, the gravel that's, that is being left on the west side of the building is being left there primarily just because it's there already and there's no reason to remove it.
Yeah, and the septic system is going to go under that gravel, but it's not being paved because it's not planned to be an access route.
Yep, and so I also noticed in that, that same context that there are no, there are no longer any marked parking spots on the north side of the, the property. And so there will be no parking of trucks or cars along that area.
That is correct.
Okay.
That was part of previous application, it's not needed as part of this one, we want to keep that area open for the trucks to come in and be able to unload back up and head back up the way they came.
Yeah, it, it seems like a much simpler traffic path that way, so I think that's definitely superior. Questions from the other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have one more quick question and because, only because I can't seem to find it in my multitude of documents here sitting next to me. The hours of the operation are going to be, could you clarify the hours of operation, please, Ellen?
Yes, it'll be Monday through Friday, it will be six to four, Saturday will just be a half day in the mornings. And they won't be open on Sundays.
Thank you.
Questions from commissioners for Ms. Bartlett?
I could, Mike Cherry.
Please.
Couple of things, and I think we've clarified most of my questions, we're good through Rev 4 of the plans, is that correct? Liz? Everybody signed off through Rev 4?
Yeah, so it's, it's a plan set that was revised to 5/11.
Yeah.
8/21 and it's noted as exhibit 39 and for this record.
Okay. We've resolved the, the clean debris, I think it's important that if that's potential future use, that it be approved now. I think it's important that if that's potential future use, that it be approved now. There's a note that I didn't understand in CLA's letter on page four under toxic and hazardous material stored on the site. I was doing well until I got to as a principal activity.
We're only talking about hazardous materials that would be used for common normal household use cleansers. You got, they're going to have to clean the bathroom. Those are considered hazardous ways, so I always put them in, but it's nothing that you wouldn't have in your house.
Okay, you've noted no maintenance will be done on any of the vehicles on the site, which is good. I have one question and it deals with probably mostly sheet two. Sheet two, there's a, there's a drainage line that goes across at the the four bay doors. And it looks like your plan connects that line to the septic system.
Yeah, can you put, push the plan setup, please, so we could see sheet two? If possible, it should be right under, under.
So it's designated as that's across the front of the the doors of the building. And it looks like that ties into.
Septic system.
Septic system, and I would think that that's a water runoff, not a sewer line. And you might want to tie that into the oil water separator instead. Am I reading that wrong?
That line runs from the building addition where they have an office and a bathroom. There isn't a bathroom in the large part, so that is sewer coming out.
That is sore. Okay, well, then there is, there's also a a rainwater or some type of collection that runs across the doors.
Yes.
And I don't see that on this drawing, but I remember it from previous site plans.
It goes to a
Well, water separator?
That's a water oil separator, but that looks like it's draining sheet flow off the paved area.
Yes, and that that's existing. It has no outlet. It's going to have to be pumped pumped out periodically.
Okay.
That it's underneath the concrete pad, so it was never connect. There's a pipe that runs to it from a floor drain, but floor drains cannot be tied into a septic system. They have. It's a holding tank and it will be pumped.
Okay. It looks like what's that you're going to install a separate oil water separator?
Yes, now that's, that was at the request of Groton Utilities and those are for for the surface runoff. They want to make it that any oils get separated. There's two of them actually before it goes to the new stormwater basins.
Is there? I mean, between the two water oil separators, oh, never mind, there is a catch basin. I finally, I see it now. That's the only questions I had. Thank you.
Ellen, may I ask a question relative to Mike's question? Could you just basically explain the maintenance? That's part of the memorandum of understanding, is it not?
Is maintenance of the oil separators is part of that.
I just, I just wanted to note that for the record so that you know that that is included in that memorandum of understand of understanding so that I it's the fine print, I can't see if it's on the plan set, but it is also part of that MOU. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Other questions from commissioners for Ms. Bartlett? Hearing none, there's all open to the public comment. First, I did want to make a note. The zoning compliance table on sheet one has a minimum building height line, which should be maximum building height line, I think.
Yes.
I saw the zoning compliance table go through several iterations. I saw in the last one, that one didn't get fixed. It's, you know, it's obviously not a problem, but. Yep, is anyone from the public wish to make any comments regarding this application? Hearing none, last call for any commissioners for comments or questions, actually questions for Ms. Bartlett regarding this application before I close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to review my conditions in case someone has questions or do that during deliberations?
We can do that during deliberation since your staff.
Perfect.
Okay, hearing no other questions from commissioners at seven thirty five PM, I will close the public hearing for application PZ twenty dash oh six SUP. With that, we'll move on to discussion and decision of said application. I will entertain a motion from a commissioner.
Mike Cherry, I'd like to make a motion to approve application PZ twenty dash zero six special use permit for twenty Lorenz industrial Parkway Ledyard of property owner generation four realty LLC agent Ellen Bartlett PE from CLA engineers for a modification of previously approved special use permit and site plan approval for a limited recycling facility with the following conditions. One, the memorandum of understanding for source water protection from stormwater drains runoff between City of Groton Department of Public Utilities and the property owner generation four real the LLC and all its provisions shall be part of this special use permit approval shall be binding on the current property owner and its successors and assigns. Said memorandum endorsed by all parties and reviewed and approved by the town attorney shall be filed on the land records with the special use permit. Fair to comply with any of the provisions of the memorandum shall be a violation of the special use permit enforcement action to suspend or revoke may be commenced. Two, this special use permit allows the operation of a limited recycling facility under its DEP general permit, which allows only clean wood, clean construction debris and recycling of cardboard and paper. Expansion to include any other additional recyclables is prohibited without the issuance of a new special use permit. No hazardous materials or waste shall be recycled on the premises. Three, facility operations may not commence until all site improvements have been completed and certificates of zoning compliance and or building certificates of occupancy have been issued. Four, as noted on the site plan, all recycling activities shall be conducted within the building. No vehicle repairs or maintenance, including washing in any manner, shall be conducted and fuel storage and or fueling facilities are prohibited on the site. Five, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit to start work, erosion and sedimentation control bond in an amount acceptable to town engineer shall be submitted to the town of Ledyard. Should that be a separate motion or should I put the sixty two hundred right here? You're muted.
Sorry, Mr. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would, I would just leave it at number five as it is and.
Do it separate?
Yeah, no, just leave it within the motion.
Okay.
So it's, as I said, I it's an erosion and sediment control bond. The amount can be worked out prior to the issuance of a zoning.
Okay, thank you. Six, prior to the issuance of the zoning permit to start work, Ledge Light Health District shall review and approve the proposed onsite septic system. Prior to the issue, seven, prior to the issuance of any certificate of zoning compliance, the applicant shall submit written verification to the zoning official that the existing tank to be removed shown on the east boundary line has been removed. And eight, prior to the issuance of any certificate of zoning compliance, the applicant shall submit written verification to the zoning official that the remove connex box and portion of concrete pad that extends over the property line shown on the east boundary line has been completed. And and along those same things, I guess, nine, prior to the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance, the furnace, outdoor wood burning furnace shown as to be removed. Shall we shall receive written verification that it has been removed.
Second, thank you for adding that. You beat me to it.
I saw, I saw you looking at it.
So I'll second that, Ms. Burdick.
Well, yes, I apologize for the record, Liz Burdick. There was a couple other ones that I actually thought of during the the meeting. I actually thought of the outdoor wood burning furnace too. I was going to include it with seven, but we can make that nine as as stated by Mr. Cherry. I would also like to add that hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, six to four, Saturday, six to twelve and closed on Sunday. I would suggest that addition. And then just for a matter of housekeeping in its entirety to you that the zoning compliance table shall be revised to show maximum height, not minimum height.
Yeah, Mr. Cherry, is the maker of the motion, are you willing to accept those modifications?
I will make that friendly amendment.
Second, yeah, I think those are, but those are both reasonable. It doesn't hurt to include the zoning compliance table as a condition. So yeah, so first of all, I want to thank Ms. Bartlett for bearing through this process and Ms. Burdick for chasing down all these things. And, you know, working with Mr. Lanalina to make sure that we understood how all this stuff could come together. You know, I think going through Ms. Burdick's memo essentially lines up that this application looks like it's got all of the approvals that they need either in place or covered by conditions. I think the the proposed use and the proposed plan seems pretty reasonable. You know, the the issues that we've always had in the past were concerns around things occurring outside of the building. We had concerns about the things that happen to vehicles, maintenance of vehicles, cleaning of vehicles and things like that on site, and none of those uses are being proposed here. So it seems like we got rid of most of the things that were a concern while still keeping this a viable operation. So I think this feels like a pretty complete plan. Do commissioners have thoughts on this application?
I could add, Mike Cherry, I looked at town of Groton's regulations that they wrote for control of industrial processes in the watershed. And I found that as written and as as proposed, this meets all those that would apply if we should decide to adopt something like that in the future, that it wouldn't. Even though it's not part of our regs, everything we would want is in there. So I congratulate CLA engineers, staff and Groton Utilities for being proactive.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? If I don't hear any, I will go ahead and call the votes as your last chance. Hearing no other comments, I will call the vote on the motion to approve with eleven conditions. Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion passes five oh. Thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Bartlett, for a good job putting this together. It was nice to see, and I want to especially thank you for your narrative description. It was a really nice guide ahead of time so that I think myself and commissioners could follow some of the engineering work. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, next, and thank you, Carl, again for for bearing with us on this. I appreciate it. Next on our agenda was the public hearing, scheduled public hearing for application PZ twenty one dash oh four resub. This application has been withdrawn and so the public hearing is canceled. Item D on our agenda was discussion and decision on that same application. So it's been withdrawn, so there is no action. Moving on to old business, we have application PZ twenty one dash oh three sub, which is a proposed three lot subdivision of forty eight Town Farm Road, Ledyard, Connecticut. Applicant Brian Cote for a sixty five point three acre subdivision. Do we have someone here for this application?
Mr. Chairman, I believe Norm Tebow is here this evening. I don't know if he's can hear us or not. I see him on, I see him on the meeting.
Mr. Tebow, are you able to hear us and unmute?
Send him a quick chat.
Deb, could you pull, let's see, you want to pull up? Which 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 one do we want here? I think it might be three. Good, Deb, could you pull up a plan number four, so that's exhibit number seven?
Hello?
Norm, is that you?
I'm on.
Can you hear us, Mr. Tebow?
Yes, I can.
Hi.
Sorry about that.
No, it's no problem. We we are, we're all challenged here.
Yeah.
So no problem at all. So yeah, do you want to introduce this a little bit and describe what's being proposed here? There's, this is a little bit unusual, and so I think it probably.
Absolutely, I think, I think what you have up here in front of you is my drainage area plan for my, for my, my drainage analysis, but.
Yeah, that's, that's the wrong one. I'm sorry.
I will, I will give you the the Cliff Note version of what we're doing here. We've got, we've got a little over sixty five acres of land total currently owned by Brian Cody, which is you can see the area, it says where the area says sixty two point four plus or minus acres. That's where the Mr. Cody's house is, his garage and so forth. There's also a second house on the property right now. And it's shown as a lot two, the one point six five nine acres. And and then lastly, we are proposing a new building lot, which is lot one, which is one point zero nine nine acres. So the the main impetus for this was to, first of all, separate the the two existing structures that are on one lot. They are currently accessed by a shared driveway that is across the Levine property. It's not even on on the subject property. So one of our first challenges for this particular project was to, first of all, try and secure access for all three lots from the Leavines, even though realistically we're, you know, two of the lots were already accessed by it. But as as part of the subdivision, what we had to do is upgrade the driveway to to provide a an impermeable surface and sixteen foot width, at least for the shared portion of the driveway. And there was some difficulty in negotiating that with the Levine. So subsequently, we did have an application in before you at one point before that we we withdrew because what we had to do is actually propose to construct a new driveway, which you can see is in the shaded area here on this plan. So what we're doing is is moving the access drive approximately forty feet away from the existing driveway. That portion of the existing driveway will no longer be utilized by Mr. Cody on either of those, either of the properties that that we're proposing or for the new lot. We did review this as far as sightline goes with Steve Maslin. And what we're actually doing is we're improving the sightline. I believe as you, as you're looking to the west, it is limited right now because of the the curvature of the road, Town Farm Road curves to the south as you, as you head west, and it does limit the sightline. Sightline to the east is also limited, but not quite as bad as it is to the west. The east, it's actually limited by by the vertical curve because as you, as you head further east down Town Farm Road, the roadway drops off and you lose sight of of the vehicles that are actually coming from that direction. All in all, this particular driveway location is an improvement on what currently exists. And I'm told by the applicant that there have been a number of close calls because people come downtown farm from the west at a pretty quick pace. They exceed the the posted speed limit of thirty miles an hour. because people come downtown farm from the west at a pretty quick pace. They exceed the, the posted speed limit of 30 miles an hour. As I said, we, we are just proposing to separate the two existing houses. 62.4 acres will remain with the, what we're calling the main house, which is Mr. Cody's residence in the summer. He actually lives in Florida in the winter. And the 1.659 acre lot is actually a house that's been rented in the past. And ultimately, I think the intention would be to sell that lot off as a, as a separate lot. The, the third lot, which is shown as Lot Number One, we did do soil testing with the Department of Health. We were demonstrating a suitable septic and septic reserve area. We received approval from the Inland Wetlands Commission twice. One time just for the activity in the upper review area by constructing the new home that we're proposing. And then secondly, we had to go back because we needed to have a, a wetlands crossing in order to construct the, the new shared portion of the driveway. Just as you enter Lot Two, the driveway will sort of sweep back to the, to the west and join up with the existing driveway there. That'll be used to, to access the rear lot. I know there were some, there what, there has been, I think the main, the main part of the discussion that, that I've had with Liz and that I've had with my client too, was the, on the subject of the, of the fee in lieu of open space. So originally, we, we had requested a reduced fee. And then based upon review by Liz, and I think she had some subsequent conversation with members of the commission. And she felt as though that probably would not be acceptable. So we did utilize the existing value of the property from the assessors department. And, and what we are proposing to do is pay the, the fee in lieu of open space of $6,780. We had then requested that a portion of it be, be paid upon the sale of each lot. And, and I believe Liz at that point said, well, if you're going to do that, then you're going to have to get a passbook and put the money into, in an account in Dine Bank and have that money there available. So either way would be acceptable, but I don't think either one of them offers any kind of advantage to my client. I believe that Liz's recommendation would be to, one or the other, either pay the full full fee in lieu of open space or provide that passbook to Dine Bank. So my, my client, my client is in agreement with either of those options. And I think that pretty much is it in a nutshell. We'd be hap, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on this, on this subdivision, if you have any.
Yep. Thanks for that. I appreciate that. And so, yeah, I think you went through most of my questions. So we, the fee in lieu is resolved. The new subdivision will create a separate lot for each of the two existing houses, so they'll be on separate lots. Mr. Maslin has signed off on the drainage and the sightlines, which I think is important. Do we have a shared driveway agreement in place?
Yes, yes, the, the language for it has been presented to the town's attorney. We, we've had the, the, the meets and bounds described that, that go into that, and it has been brought into, to Liz. It hasn't been, it certainly hasn't been filed yet, but I believe that, you know, Mr. Mr. Cody's attorney reviewed it quite extensively and then passed it on to Liz, who in turn, I believe, passed it on to the town's attorney.
But, Mr. Chairman, and typically we will put that as a condition of approval, but I must have had a, it must have been a Monday morning when I put this report together and I'm reading my recommended conditions, but I would recommend, you know, as a condition of approval, that the final shared driveway easement and maintenance agreement for review by Attorney Landalina. And certainly we can send that off to him promptly if, I believe I've sent it off, but you know, there's just so many easement and driveway maintenance agreements in Ledger that I don't recall the date. So that would, should be a condition of approval that that agreement. But there is an agreement, maintenance agreement and an easement agreement in the file with the meets and bounds description.
Okay.
So it's literally, you know, been submitted. It should be attached to the application on the, on iCompass, a copy of it with, with the application form. So it's in the first, first document, set of documents.
And if I may, it certainly is, has, we have every intention of filing that on the land records once the final language is approved by the town's attorney.
Great, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. You know, we, we have enough pseudo driveways and pseudo roads in town. We don't need more that don't have the maintenance agreement.
You're, you're certainly not alone in that. We run across it all the time.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, yeah, I do see. I, thank you. I did, I did miss it. It is at the very end of Exhibit One is the, the draft wording there. So you have a proposal. Okay. Questions from commissioners for Mr. Tebow?
Mike Cherry, I always have a question. I didn't see the paperwork requesting the waiver of the A2 survey. Did I just not read all the enclosures? Or I know we're looking to grant the waiver, but I don't see the request for.
It'll be part of Exhibit One. Exhibit One is rather long, lengthy.
Okay.
Because I saw it.
Okay.
There's page 30 in there. Yeah.
That was my only question.
Yeah, and that, and I could also say that there is, there is a, an A2 survey on file for the entire parcel. So basically this 62.4 plus or minus acres is the remaining land after these two lots are divided off of it.
Questions or comments from other commissioners? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, even from someone other than Mr. Cherry.
I don't.
If nobody's gonna jump in, I'd be happy to make some.
Yeah, I'm starting to feel a complex that no one reads my memos.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mike.
Thanks.
All right. So I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve application EZ 21-03 SUP of Brian E. Cody for a proposed three lot subdivision of 48 Town Farm Road, Ledyard, Connecticut, including the application, its supporting documents, and a plan entitled Proposed Three Lot Subdivision 48 Town Farm Road, Ledyard, Connecticut, prepared for Brian R. Cody, prepared by Killingly Engineering Associates, dated August 2020. Revised 0407 2021 with the following conditions. Number one, the commission grants the request for a waiver of the A2 survey SR per Section 8.4.3 for proposed Lot Three, as there is no proposal to further develop the large lot with an existing single-family dwelling and accessory structures at this time. Number two, applicant shall comply with requirement for digital map submissions per state reg Section 3.1.5.
Subdivision regs, Marty.
It's subdivision regs. Thank you very much. Item three, applicant shall submit a copy of the warranty deed for proposed land to be deeded to the town for road widening as shown on the final approved plan for review and approval by the town attorney prior to the acceptance by the town and filing on the Ledyard land records per SR Section 4.2.4.2.2. Item number four, certification of improvements for, per SR Section 5.8 required after completion of shared driveway. Condition number five, that LS shall submit certification of installment of required monumentation prior to filing of any approved final plans per subreg Section 5 decimal 4 decimal 3. Condition number six, prior to endorsement, the final plan shall be revised to add proposed lot addresses as assigned by the Ledyard Tax Assessor. Condition number seven, the application shall either pay a fee in lieu of open space to the town of Ledyard in the amount of $6,780 or shall file a passbook from Dine Bank in the amount of $6,780 with the town treasurer in accordance with the procedures of said office prior to the filing of the subdivision plans on the Ledyard land records. And there was an eighth condition, which I would need assistance in getting the exact words on that. Liz, could you help me with that?
I surely can. Commissioner Wood, Mr. Chairman, may I continue? I would, I would note that a shared driveway maintenance easement and maintenance agreement be submitted to the town for review and approval by the town attorney and filed on the land records with the subdivision plan. Does that work for you guys?
That works for me as the.
Yep.
I'll, I'll second that motion, Mike Cherry.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Ms. Burdick, technical question. Subdivision waiver requires a three-quarter vote. So typically we, we do those outside of the, of the approval. Does that mean that we need, we need to get four votes on this motion? And that would pass the waiver and the motion to approve the subdivision?
Well, well, I'm, I'm gonna ask our attorney, Landa Lena. I believe it would, but he may disagree with me.
For the record, Carl Landlin, I would suggest that the waiver, that part of the motion which is on the table, which discusses the waiver, that part be removed in that a, your pending motion be tabled so that a separate motion can be made to grant the waiver. Act on that and then act on the, take the motion off the table and act on the motion to approve.
Okay. Thank you for that. I wasn't sure what the, what the process was.
So if you need a motion to table the current motion, I'll make that motion.
Now I'll second it.
Thank you very much. And so then I will, with that motion tabled, I will make a motion to grant the request for a waiver of the A2 survey per subdivision reg Section 8.4.3 for proposed Lot Three, as there is no proposal to further develop the large lot with an existing same, single-family dwelling and accessory structures at this time.
Mike Cherry, I'll second that.
Thank you. So yeah, so the, the subdivision regulations spell out the, the times and reasons when we can grant a waiver. And this feels like a pretty reasonable one. This is a, a large lot with an existing house already on it. There isn't going to be any development on this lot, and so I'm not sure what we gain by insisting on a full A2 survey for this created lot. As long as we know where the boundaries are between lots one and two in that lot, I feel like we probably have everything that we need. Questions or comments from commissioners?
There's an A2 on file for the existing lot. I think that's very reasonable.
Yeah.
And Mike Cherry, it's also consistent with past practices of the, of the commission.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call the vote on the motion to grant the waiver to subdivision Section 8.4.3. Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the waiver passes. And so we will go back to our motion to approve.
So once again, if you need a motion to take it off the table, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll second that.
Thank you all. And so we need to modify that motion to remove Condition One regarding the waiver of subdivision regs.
Marty Wood, I accepted the friendly recommendation since the item, or item number one was handled separately in removing that from the original motion.
And I had seconded the original motion, and I, I agree with removal of item one, friendly amendment.
Great, thank you all. So we are back down to seven conditions. With that fun out of the way, any questions or comments from commissioners regarding the motion to approve the subdivision? Okay, hearing none, I will call the vote on the motion to approve the three lot subdivision of 48 Town Farm Road. Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much all. Thank you, Mr. Tebow.
Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it. Have a nice night.
You too. Thank you. Okay, next item under old business is application EZ 20-05 Map Amendment for 1978 Route 12, Gales Ferry. Unfortunately, there was a procedural error, and so we cannot open this. And so we are going to reset the public hearing for our June 10th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Moving on to new business, we will accept application EZ 20-06 SUP 964 Long Cove Road, Ledyard.
21?
Yeah, did I say 2020? Thank you, Ms. Scanlon. Right, so we're receiving application EZ 21-06 SUP 964 Long Cove Road, Ledyard, Connecticut. Applicant owner James Robinson, application for special use permit approval for earth product excavation and removal and for construction of a detached steel garage. We will open the public hearing for this application on June 10th, 2021. Thank you. Initial drawings are attached. We will also accept application EZ 21-07 Site, 7 Fairway Drive, Ledyard. Applicant property owner Jacob Gear for site plan approval for commercial development, auto repair facility, proposed building and parking area. We are only receiving this application. There's no application on this or no action on this application tonight. Next on our agenda is a informal or preliminary discussion of zone map change for proposed future restaurant and private dog park at 1528 Route 12, Gales Ferry. Sarah and Patrick Scully, are you guys still around?
Yes, we are, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Hi, how you doing? Thanks for bearing with us. You want to talk a little bit about what you're thinking about doing? And, you know, I think it would be useful for the commission. And so if the commission doesn't recall, this is a lot that was in the Gales Ferry Design District. We approved a zone change to make it part of the CIP zone. And the current proposed use would probably require this moving back to the Gales Ferry Design District. Gales Ferry Design District. So with all that. Sarah and Patrick, why don't you tell us a little bit about what you're thinking about doing?
All right. Well, thank you for having us. Thank you for adding us on tonight. Hello to everyone. My name is Sarah Scully. I am a resident of Connecticut. I've lived here all my life. I live in Waterford, Connecticut. My husband Patrick and I have had been working on this plan for a few years, but. You know, our first plan was to kind of open a brewery. We're kind of looking at that, but with our research, we found that there's just an over saturation of breweries in Connecticut. And so our vision kind of evolved and especially over the last four to six months, we've kind of. Just something you think would fit in the Gales Ferry Design District based on recommendations from Liz, from the town, from a real term, from our attorney. So our vision has evolved to basically a rustic cafe style like taproom. And we would offer food via food truck, local food trucks. We would not have a kitchen. It would just be a taproom. We would also have an outdoor patio that would be dog friendly and an extended patio on to that. That would also be dog friendly with additional seating. Adirondack chairs, fire pits if they're permitted. This will be a totally fenced in area to the taproom. So that's kind of what our vision is. What makes our taproom unique? We are looking to promote and partner with local breweries. So we aren't looking to compete. We're trying to partner with local breweries where we can promote their beer. Help market their local breweries in the state. For example, someone like Hooker Brewery who's in Bloomfield. You know, it's a long drive, so having somebody like that. Like a tap takeover. Maybe have like a dog adoption, different sorts of events that we that we really want to bring the community together. And in addition to that, we really would like to get involved in the community. Community outreach programs, maybe in the future, building up scholarship programs for future entrepreneurs. Stuff like that. So we really want to. Partner with local businesses, local food trucks, local breweries, and really offer what Connecticut already has to offer in Gales Ferry.
Yeah, thanks, guys. So you know, I mean, I think, you know, certainly it it goes without saying that, you know, pubs and restaurants. And things like that are, you know, obviously, you know, what the Gales Ferry District is designed for. And so, you know, I think I think it's a good fit. You know, the the thing that, you know, and it's not a zoning problem. The thing you'll have to figure out is what D P H wants to do all those things. And that's, but that's not a zoning problem. You know, from what you've described, you're talking about. You know, you're going to have a a pub and and a restaurant and whether there's outdoor areas where dogs sit or don't sit. You know. You know, it doesn't keep me up at night either way. So, yeah, I mean, and I think, you know, I think it works as far as this particular lot. You know, I mean, it's it's a shame that it got it got moved to SIP. You know, it is, this is at the confluence of R forty to the north of it. SIP to the south of it and Gales Ferry to, I don't know. Yeah, I mean. So, you know, I I think it's it's. Argue against it being in any one of those particular zones, you know, I I think. You know, the Gales Ferry District gives the most flexibility of uses that you can have in the lot. So, you know, sort of. From my point of view, I don't, yeah. Works for me. Comments or thoughts from other commissioners or questions for the Scullies?
If if I could, I know so. Agenda talks about the property at fifteen twenty eight Route twelve. I noted that that property is. Connected with five nine seventy two Long Cove Road.
Correct.
Are you thinking of utilizing both properties?
I thank you, Mr. Cherry, for that for that question. I think right now we're just looking at the commercial piece because the residential piece, you know, there's. There's a vernal pool. We did have it assessed. There is a vernal pool on the R forty. So I don't think we'd be able to build any structures and we're not looking to build at this time.
Okay, and well, and that would be problematic because that's surrounded by R forty.
Yes, correct.
Whereas this one. You know, it it was Gales Ferry Design District, the previous. Previous owner was concerned he couldn't sell it because maybe you would need a sidewalk.
Yeah.
But he didn't read the regs closely and didn't ask the right questions, so. So you're just looking at fifteen twenty eight Route twelve at this time.
So to just to build on, so we're we are looking to purchase both properties. But we're only looking to build on the commercial piece. I just because they're selling it as as one property.
Okay, and you know, as I as I look at the regs, I don't know, dog. If you wanted a dog park and no structures, would that be a park and playground? You know, that's something for the commission to try and scratch our heads on and say. What zoning would be required if you're not going to put up any. Any big structures. It sounds like a park to me when you say dog.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, definitely. Yeah, no structures, just, yeah, I guess it's.
You know, maybe some fencing or what have you. You know, I've I've looked at this from both sides. Driving down Long Cove Road because I live up in. Up on the end of Pheasant Run and down twelve because my dentist is across the street. And it looks like there's there's room for access for driveways and roads from both.
Yes, correct. Yes, there was. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
There was a preliminary plan, I think, for the previous owner that they put in. Application for a driveway off of Route twelve. I believe.
And I know our our wetlands official is online. That crossing was approved at the time they did the.
Correct.
The regrading.
Yes. There was a culvert that was constructed and put in place back in two thousand and seven.
Okay.
We had a wetland scientist come out and approve it and basically take a walk through the property. It was never completed. There was never a curb cut out. Prior buyer back then backed out, but yeah, that that it basically just finished maybe fifteen twenty yards from Route twelve.
Well, that's a state road, so a curb cut on state road. You know, you might want to take a close look, make sure I I would think you have. Sightlines.
Oh, I'm sure because there's a curve right there. So, yeah, we definitely need a traffic engineer involved.
But you know, that requires state approval, which is. Always takes a little extra time. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it.
Yeah, so I I think the the point that Mr. Chair brought up around, you know, if it's a park or not, I think is a good one. And certainly when I when I read this, you know, and I I've heard what you've proposed. You know, the the question is, when does a park become some sort of a kennel? You know, and for me, I haven't, you know, all the proposals I've heard are that. You know, the owners of the dogs are going to be on site with the dogs at all times. And so, you know, when 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 the dog isn't changing hands, then to me, yeah, it's a park, you know, and so whether it's it's kids or dogs. It sounds an awful lot like a park to me. So yeah, I think it's a it's a fair comment. Other thoughts from commissioners? Nothing? Okay.
Sounds like a good idea.
I have one question. So would the extended patio, if we replaced? I know in the past we've talked about a park, but kind of talking to our attorney and what would be the best. An extended patio that would not be considered a park, even if there are dogs on it. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
So you're talking about you'd have a patio area where people might take food or or beer and sit at picnic tables?
Correct, yes.
That's outdoor seating.
Okay, perfect.
I mean, from the zoning point of view, I don't think we can care whether you have a dog with you. At a picnic table or not, I, you know.
And and my comments were really directed towards nine seventy two Long Cove Road, which is in our forty piece. Parks and playgrounds are allowed. Restaurants and such are not, so.
Even if there's a vernal pool on the property, would we be able to use that for utilize that for like walking trails? Or some, as long as there's no structures?
I mean, that's a question for the wetlands official, what you would have to do to protect the wetlands.
Okay. Absolutely.
Yeah, and that that that's a question that can't really be answered without a specific plan. You know, what you'd want to do there and and whether or not it was okay.
All right, we're not planning that right now, so.
Oh, no, yeah, yeah, that's that's why I say, you know, that that's something that without a specific plan, you know.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Any other?
Excited that there's a viable proposal for these two properties that have been vacant for a long time.
Yeah.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. We're very excited.
Which means it should do well.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a lot of, we have some partnerships already that we're hoping it will thrive pretty quickly and take off, so it's our hope.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, no, I think that, you know, I I I don't hear a lot of concerns from commissioners. You know, about moving forward with this. And so I I think that, you know, we we welcome your application to move forward with this and. You know, if you have any other questions or anything like that, you know, staff or or the commission, I think is happy to help.
Thank you so much.
No, I think we're, thank you for letting us present our idea to you and thank you, Liz, for getting us on the schedule and. Commission for listening to us. We really appreciate you taking the time.
Great.
You. All right, thank you, guys.
We'll look forward to hear hearing from you again soon then. Have a good night and and thanks for sticking around. That's the whole meeting there. Next on our agenda is correspondence. I have no specific correspondence other than to note, I'm sure people have. Seen some of the many articles that have been in in the Hartford Current and the day around the the. Proposed legislature changes to the zoning statute as well as what may come from current lawsuits. And so I encourage everyone to to stay up to date with where that goes. Next, under reports, Ms. Burdick, do you have a planner report?
I I sure do. I don't know if you, I know that Attorney Landelina may have a report. I don't know if you would like to take. Item C out of order and and let him. Go home early and. That's entirely up to you or Attorney. It's fine.
I I I think that's fine. I think I think you can yield your time to Mr. Landelina and we can come back to you.
Right, you know, so that I don't get yelled at by the mayor for the budget. Sorry, Carl.
That's all right.
I always keep the 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 clock running.
I got my ledgered hours in for the day, so.
Okay, so then we can wait. No, I'm just kidding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Carl Andalena. There's an issue that that has arisen that I want to discuss with you and. Although the, there are three. Pending applications. By a vineyard operator in in Ledyard. Those applications are are not coming before you, but they are intended for the Department of Consumer Protection Liquor Control. And they require sign off by local authorities, including the fire marshal. And the local zoning enforcement officer. And. At least two of them have to do with. A request. To be made by the local operator to the state of Connecticut. That are fairly new requests that came about as a result of a public act that was passed in two thousand nineteen. Two thousand nineteen, the legislature. Adopted what I would call an omnibus revision to the Liquor Control Act. And there were seventy five pages worth of amendments to various statutes. And. There is a one, there one of the sections has to do with a new permit. That's been created by the legislature. Called the craft cafe license. So what is anticipated by the craft cafe license or what is permitted under this license? Would be for. Farm vineyards. To sell craft beer and craft distilled products at the winery. There also is a provision, essentially reciprocal language for breweries to sell. Wine and distilled products. So that the idea was that each of these. Businesses would be put on a level playing field. And the idea that the sale and all these products must be made in Connecticut. So that. Each of these different operations, whether you're a brewery or a winery, you would be allowed to sell each other's products. So there is a, and now this. Particular. Section went into effect on July first, twenty twenty, so it's been less than a year. In that year. I would say probably about thirty. Craft breweries have obtained the license, so they are now able to sell. Wine made in Connecticut at their breweries. In addition, there's been nine or ten. Wineries, which have been granted this permit by the state of Connecticut. And it allows each of those wineries to sell craft beer at the winery. So we have a local operator who's requesting a local sign off. So that they can have this craft cafe license. I've done as much work as I can at this point by contacting the nine communities. That have allowed or who's who who have in fact to have vineyards. Or wineries, excuse me, in their community and that have these permits and and, you know. Not all of them are on equal footing in terms of. You know, under what circumstances were they approved and how they were, you know, they operate in in accordance with. You know, local regulations and such, so. You know, my goal was to try to see if. There were any discussions with town attorneys regarding the issuance or the sign off by the zoning enforcement officer. For these licenses and thus far, I put it out on the CAMA website, which is the Connecticut Association of Municipal Attorneys. I tried, I reached out to. The attorneys in in some of the nine areas or towns, and I didn't really get much of a response. Now, the. As as you probably know. And I I'm going to go into a little detail here because I think it's necessary. The farm winery provisions have been around since nineteen seventy nine. And the statute that allowed farm wineries to exist. Has changed a little bit over time, but essentially allows. A farm to become, that is a vineyard as well, i.e. growing grapes. To open a winery and manufacture and sell wine. From their location. And they also are allowed to sell for on site. Either by the glass or bottle, the wine that they manufacture at their properties. So it's my, and I. I I've done a lot of research on this particular issue because it's come up in two other towns that I that I represent. And in in a third context would actually represent an owner of a vineyard. And it's my opinion. That the vineyard operator, the wine winery operator. Is entitled to that permit as long as they're a farm and as long as they comply with the provisions of the statute. Which require within a certain amount of time, twenty five percent of the grape to be grown on site or by the operator at least. That they're really entitled to that permit unless there is a ordinance or regulation in town. There prohibits the sale in service of alcoholic beverages. And that was put into the. And that was put into the statute right from the start in 1979. Because guys as old as me and Mike Cherry know that there was a time when there were dry towns in the state of Connecticut. I don't know how many are left, if there are any, but there might be a few. So that was put in there to accommodate the those towns. So having said that, I've looked at the legislative history of 2019-24 and its creation of this craft cafe license. And I view it much in the same way that a, an existing farm winery is entitled to the permit. Unless the the sale of alcoholic beverages is not permitted by it by the town, either by ordinance or regulation. So the permit requires a sign off by your zoning enforcement officer. The permit's been in the hands of the zoning enforcement officer and staff for quite some time while we tried to figure out. You know, again, this is new, this is only 10 months old, and we want to do some research in terms of you know, how the town should or can act on this particular application. So having said that, there is a second and third application, which is still, which are also pending. One would, it's a, it's an application for extension. And I guess would allow this particular operator to have an outside serving area. And the third application would be to allow this particular operator to bring their goods to you know, for sale at, you know, I'm sorry, like, you know, not a farm stand, but you know, if you have a farmer's market somewhere in town, it goes on regularly. That the product under the permit would be allowed to be carried offsite by the by the operator and sold at a farmer's market. So that was also something that was created by Public Act 19-24, the right to do that. So this operator is asking for those three things. And before, you know, I've had discussions with Liz about this, and we've gone back and forth several times. But, you know, I don't make the decision as to whether the town signs off on this permit. I can only tell you my understanding of the public act and what I think it allows and what it doesn't allow. So it's, it's, you know, given that you've got some other things going on with respect to these types of operations. You've got this ad hoc committee, and this is not really something that they would necessarily be discussing. But that's going on concurrently with these pending applications that Liz and I both thought it was appropriate to bring this to your attention. And, and, you know, if anyone had any questions or opinions on this, we could certainly answer them. So that's where we are at this point.
Thanks. Let me make sure I got it straight in my head. So the, the, what makes a farm winery is defined in that statute, right?
Yes.
And so what defines a brewery that would be able to be sold is defined by that statute.
Correct.
And so, and it's your opinion that as long as both the winery and the brewer brewery meet those requirements, then the statute allows them to cross sell or whatever the right, right term is there?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, you know, that makes sense then. Other questions, questions from commissioners? I assume Mr. Cherry's hand is up.
So normally somebody wants to open a restaurant or something and serve alcoholic beverages. It's allowed by our regs. It says alcoholic liquor. This falls outside of those regs as long as it is an agricultural product, it sounds like.
Yes.
Okay. And then the, it also allows the agricultural product to be sold at a agriculture or farmer's market.
Correct.
Now, sell and consume? Are they equivalent or is it like, you know, wine, wine was kind of like tasting?
So the, the sale for onsite consumption at, at the winery, at the location where the winery is, is permitted under the statute that's been around for, you know, almost 50 years now.
Okay.
So that allows onsite consumption by the glass or bottle and free tastings as well.
Yeah.
So before you go and buy a bottle of wine at any one of these farm wineries, you can ask for, I think it's limited two or three ounces. Get a taste and say, oh, it's great. Well, I'm going to take a bottle home. The, I believe, I don't have the act in front of me, that the taking of the wine off the premises to a farmer's market would also allow a free tasting. Not, not, so it doesn't, wouldn't allow sale for consumption at that point, and you must be sealed bottles. But I think it allows for someone to say, can I get a taste? And then they buy a bottle of wine and then they have to, you know, leave the site.
Do you think that's true for the craft beers also?
If there's a, you mean a free taste?
Get a flight of those craft beers to decide which growler I want. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I think you might be able to, but the, the farmer's markets, as I understand it, the, even if the vineyard sells craft beer, I don't believe they can bring craft beer because they're not, they're not the manufacturer.
Okay.
So the vineyard can only bring their wine.
Oh, so the farmer's market is only for their own product?
That's correct.
Carl, we looked at this when they first came out with the law for farm breweries.
Right.
To see if there were spots they could fit. Matter of fact, we had somebody come in and say, boy, I want to do that. Turned out he didn't, but at least he had a good idea at the time. So, so it sounds like it's the same signature that would go on somebody applying for an alcohol permit.
Correct.
And in the category here isn't because zoning allows it, it's because it's allowed by the state law for agricultural use.
So the wording on the permit application is a little bit unusual in that it doesn't say it's permitted. It says it's, the zoning enforcement officer says, I am familiar with the regulations, the zoning regulations in the town of Legerd. And they do not prohibit this activity, which is much different than saying
Yeah.
it is permitted.
Yeah.
And obviously, you know, that was done for a purpose, I would say. I mean, otherwise, you know, it's not, no, no, no one just picked that language out. It was done for a purpose. And I think it was done to match the statutes, which say the farmers have a right to do this unless there's a prohibition against it in the ordinances or some regulation.
Well, if, if, if somebody takes exception to this, I don't think it's something that would fall under eight two for appeal. It's not a zoning thing, it's a, it's under a different statute.
And yeah, I, I've never heard of anyone, you know, any decision by the zoning enforcement officer is is appealable to the zoning board of appeals. I've never heard of someone trying to do that in the context of the zoning enforcement officer signing off on an application for a state permit or something.
Would, would this be appealable, similar to zoning things?
I, I, you know, I, I doubt it.
Yeah, I mean, it's weird. First, how do you prove you've been aggrieved?
Well, that's true enough. And, and the, the permit is actually issued by the state of Connecticut. So it's not like the zoning enforcement officers issuing any permits.
So it's not a final action?
Probably not. So again, just all the zoning enforcement officer is doing is saying there's nothing in our town that prohibits this activity.
Why, I think, you know, seeing Sal and Paul both on our Zoom call, I mean, I look at anything that that makes agriculture more viable as probably a good thing until it's abused. And I think, you know, we have an operator who has shown that he doesn't abuse his privileges, tries to keep his farm going. I don't think we have a horse in the race. I think it's all on the zoning official. Sorry about that, Kyle.
Well, I think the clarification from, you know, Carl is probably what's here. But, you know, look, the, the, the two entities are defined by the state statute and state statute says, look, they're allowed to do this.
Yeah.
And so, you know, at that point.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick question. Chris, thank you, Attorney Landelina, because that was a, that was a really good explanation. So if a local winery wanted to sell craft beer, it wouldn't be for someone to go, you know, sort of bustle up, they wouldn't be operating a bar. So someone could go in there, they could taste wine and they could taste the craft beer, whatever the free samples are, right? And then they could buy either the beer or the wine and leave the premises. So it's not a matter of, you know, ponying up to the bar and throwing back three or four brews, correct? That's what I want to clarify.
Just for clarification, no, onsite consumption of these products is allowed under the statute.
All right, so they could, so a person could in fact, and I'm just clarifying this for my own, because you said when you have a farm brewery, you're allowed to give samples of the wine you make. And then someone could buy.
Offsite.
Oh, offsite. Okay, thank you. That's where I was confused. So you're allowed to give samples at the farmer's market and then?
I believe you are, yes.
Okay, but at the winery, you could have a glass of wine in the tasting room. And so therefore you could also have a glass of beer.
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I want to clarify.
This would solve so many marital disputes over, are we going to the brewery or the winery?
Maybe that, maybe that was the whole intention of it.
The answer to that is go to both. I, I mean, you know, it's the comments we hear are, how come we've approved so many liquor stores? Well, we don't approve liquor stores. We just say that they're not prohibited in the place that they want to put them. And the state approves it based on population. But there are still some people other than Carl and I that remember the blue laws and, you know, can't drink on Sundays, you know. It happens. I mean, I went to Bainbridge, we used to have to drive to Baltimore on weekends because you couldn't buy a beer on Sunday.
I went to school in Delaware.
Yeah.
We drove to Maryland to get beer.
Yeah.
Not anymore. They changed the laws in Delaware.
Well, yeah, but 50 years ago they did.
Yeah, finally, yeah.
Remember what happened 50 years ago, though, Mike.
I couldn't remember the same week that it happened.
Yeah, no, I, I, thanks for that, Carl. Yeah, that, that makes, that was a good explanation. Makes sense to me. Yeah, I mean, do you, did you, do you want to, I don't think you need a motion or anything from us.
I definitely do not want a motion from you guys. I, I, you know, I just wanted to have this discussion. All right, because I know that, that the larger context, you know, that's outside the scope of what we're talking about here. And I certainly don't want to go there, but I just, you know, I didn't want anyone to say, well, wait a minute, there's a larger context. And you've sliced off a little bit of what, what that process is, and I'm not slicing off anything, I don't think. Um, you know, we're still going to have discussions about the larger context, I assume.
Yeah, no, and I, I think that, you know, the, the question that it obviously, the correlated question that it obviously raises is that, you know, currently our zoning regs are silent on, you know, winery isn't mentioned, right? You know, we don't, we don't have that mentioned anywhere. And so I think, you know, when, when I first started thinking about it, that was certainly part of my confusion. You know, was, well, we didn't even mention wineries in our regulations. So how does that play? And so that's why I think, you know, that's one thing that we need to fix, but your explanation of what the statute means, you know, kind of answers that question for those, those specific bits that you talked about, so.
Well, we always felt was part of 11Q agricultural endeavors.
Right, if you look at the definition of farming, the processing of agricultural products is, is
Yeah.
is part and parcel of that activity. So I, you know, I don't, and that's why, you know, if you take a look at that, plus the 30-16E, which is the farm winery section I'm talking about, it only makes sense that, you know, if I grow grapes, I can make jam. I can make, I can make wine or I can make something else with them right on my premises.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense. Appreciate that. Any other questions from commissioners for Mr. Landelina while we've got him? All right, hearing none. Thanks a lot for that, Carl. I appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Liz says I have to get off the clock now or she's going to get me.
No, you said that you were, you said that you were free now, so you can certainly stay as long as you'd like, Carl.
It's time for dinner.
I hear that.
I don't want to get a call from the boss, but thank you. I appreciate you hanging in there with.
All right, guys, yeah, take care. Enjoy the weekend.
So before we go back to the town planner report, Mr. Wood was kind, kind enough to inform me that I had skipped over the most exciting part of the meeting, meeting, which is the approval of the last minutes. So I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you very much. Any additions or corrections to the minutes from April 8?
I'll find them again.
Hearing none, I will call the motion to approve the minutes of April 8. Ms. Ganlon?
Yes, approved.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Approved.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the motion passes 5:00 before Mr. Cherry can find the documents.
And I want to say beyond a doubt that was one of the best meetings we had. The chair was just fantastic and hearing everything we, we wanted to talk about and what more can I say?
I was remiss in thanking Katie for doing an excellent job last month. Thank you for, for reminding me. I appreciate that and job well done, obviously.
No problem.
Now, Ms. Burdick, back to the town planner report.
Okay, I'm going to keep it short and sweet since it's 8:47 at night, but good news. We today from the DECD got our finally, final documents to be signed by the mayor, to be signed by the commissioner to start our steep project. And the, the food pantry is going to be wrapping up either this week or next week. So the DPW guys are going to be ready to roll. So that's, that's good news. That was a long time coming for, I hate to say relatively small grant because no money is, you know, a small grant. But in the big scheme of things, it was a long time coming. Our CDBG documents for the Legerd Housing Project, alleging Legerd Housing Authority Senior Housing Project also came in last week. Our consultant is reviewing them. He just yesterday sent me an email that's full of attachments that I haven't had a chance to read yet. So those will be either the weekend or Monday morning. Our LAPSIP project is moving along, but we, we did have a little glitch because it came in about 50% over budget. Yes, so our, our $1.7 million grant is now around $3 million. And, and here's the thing, we were required to go to the COG Executive Committee to get approval for that 50% over. And on there were other towns that went over. New London went 450% over their, their budget. And there, there was a lot of discussion because what they feel that's really happening here. Now, keep in mind that we did expend $10,000 for preliminary plans, just to put the application together. They told us what they wanted. They said, we want really simple, okay? That's all we want for preliminary review for the awards. So that's what we did. And then we went to the council and we got a resolution to go out for an RFP to have a consult, put together the application. So the town is, you know, we put aside that amount of money. And of course, now after the survey work is done and after the real numbers are coming in, it's significantly higher. So COG sort of is taking not a little responsibility, but giving us a little leeway in that they think perhaps the next round of low tip they think perhaps the next round of low tip funding, they're going to not want these sort of, hey, all we need is a sketch and a, in a sort of half estimate. So now, uh, it's going to put a little bit of a burden on towns because they're going to want at the pre-application stage, you know, applications that we're going to have to expend about a hundred thousand dollars to put together with no guarantee that we're going to get it. So, you know, it's sort of a catch twenty-two situation. But we, um, we actually, um, our consultant Lisa Slonis from Weston and Sampson did an excellent presentation to the executive committee. What, uh, at the, at the meeting, what happened was unfortunately she did a really, really good memo. I'd be happy to, uh, forward it off to any of you that are interested in looking at it. I may start sort of a low tip section and on the webpage, town website page as well, so people can see what we're looking at. That's the next step. We're working on that. But, um, but what happened was we had submitted that memorandum oh, almost two weeks prior to the meeting because Lisa was going on vacation, so she got it done early. But somehow there was a glitch and it was never posted on the executive committee's website. And some of the committee members said they had to have more time to read it. So we're going back on the eighteenth. We do not anticipate that we are not going to get it. You know, considering that they put a project that was four hundred and fifty percent over the estimated cost straight through without questions. Um, and, and we hope that it's going to go through, but some of the, uh, town leaders, town, uh, CEOs wanted more time to look at our, our memorandum. So it is moving forward, however. So, um, the other thing we did was we had, uh, this week, a, our Ledger Center feasibility kickoff meeting, which was really good. We have, uh, a really great engineer from Weston and Sampson. His name is Matt Germaine on board along with Chris Wester. We have, uh, sort of a plan in place, uh, for getting some soils data out to them and trying to, uh, partner with, uh, Sal Monarcha that owns the Ledger Center School and his engineer to sort of work together, uh, with some of the information that they've done. They've done a lot of test pits over there. They've already done a little bit of design. Um, and so we're going to work on getting them that information within the next, I have, get it to them in the next week or so, and we're going to have a follow-up meeting. So that's going to move along quickly. Um, I think, uh, some of you attended some of the town council meetings. There has been some discussion that some of the Ameri, uh, the Recovery Act funds may be utilized, uh, for laying that sewer pipe. And if we're digging for a low sit path, uh, that's the time to do it. So, um, it's not completely all together yet, but, but we're getting there. And as you can see, our, uh, agenda is very busy all of a sudden. Kyle's going to be thrilled. One of the applications is for, um, Fairway Drive where Jacob Gere is going to build a auto repair facility, which, uh, if approved and when built, will alleviate an ongoing zoning problem. That, uh, on another property in town. We have a, uh, uh, what do we have? We have, uh, uh, gravel excavation and we have the zone map amendment. And because, um, you know, we're really slow, I've decided to relocate out of state and I will actually be leaving all of you soon. Uh, and, and that's not a joke. Um, I, I am doing that. I did, I did give my notice. Um, I'm relocating out of state and, um, I have though agreed this probably will not be my last meeting, but it'll be my last meeting as a full-time staff member. I'm going to stay on in a sort of a part-time, um, position to make sure that there's some continuity between me and the next person. Apparently, um, after Charlie left, there was a big gap for a long time where a lot of things fell through the, uh, the cracks. And, um, we don't want that to happen again. We've got a lot of projects going and I don't want any misses. So I am going to be working remotely with, you know, currently a new staff and, uh, with the commission and with our consultants until someone moves onboard and up to speed.
Yes, I'll, I'll be first to, to thank you for, you know, all the work that you have put in and, uh, to say that it's a loss, uh, for the town, um, to lose you, uh, without a doubt. Uh, and I just, you know, I want to thank you for, uh, being willing to, you know, kind of bridge that gap um, and working part-time remotely, um, you know, so that we can, the, the momentum can continue and, and, you know, we can, uh, you know, only sort of do knowledge transfer once, um, from you to, whatever poor sap has to step into your shoes. Then, so, you know, uh.
Yeah, I'm going to really miss everybody. Um, you know, I think that, you know, in the three years that I've been here, I know it's been three years. It feels like it was last year I started, but it feels like we've gotten a lot accomplished. And, you know, I, I'm really proud of this commission and, um, of the town and how they've moved forward with some of these projects. And, uh, I'm really excited to see how they, uh, go forward in the future. I know you guys will keep them moving.
I, on your way out, could you do us a favor?
Yes, Mike, I, uh, why don't you?
Corner the mayor, grab his ear and talk about how every other community that you can think of has an assistant planner.
I, I will do that.
They have Paul Nichols and then he got a better position in Groton, I believe. And we used to have, uh, uh, Kristin Avila-Cark. She got a couple of better positions and left us. And then we decided we didn't need an assistant planner and, uh, fought like hell to get Deb. And I don't know what we'd do without Deb.
Agreed.
I don't know what the planner would do without, without Deb. So if you could.
Or Kyle.
I don't know what.
Deb's, Deb's more, Deb, Deb is, has more job security than any of us.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, she's great and Kyle's great. And, uh, yeah, we have a really, we have a really good team going right now. But sometimes, you know, all things come to an end and, uh, it's, it's a new beginning for me and I'm, I'm excited about it.
Yeah, you don't have an assistant because I dropped the ball the last couple of times we needed a new planner.
Yeah.
And I didn't insist on an org chart with good job descriptions for what the land use department should look like. And, uh, so we just kind of evolved instead of planned our way into it, which is kind of sad for planning.
Well, I think that the mayor is actually, uh, Mayor Allen. Um, I don't know if you, you spoke with him, but he's actually, uh, he's going in that direction now. Just let you know.
Just bringing in an intern is, is.
Well, that was my question is, uh, the town approved a, uh, a salary for an intern. And we have a young man out of, uh, who lives in Quaker Hill. Uh, he's a, uh, Yukon grad, graduate. He's working on his, uh, Masters of Public Administration. His name is Jude Hage. He's going to be starting with us in September. We've offered him the position. He's accepted it and the town can, if they choose to, if somebody could wrangle some more funds out of the town council, they could hire him starting tomorrow if they needed some help with stuff. So there, there can be a side deal made, but the Yukon intern program does not start to the fall. But there will be some help in the fall for the planner. So that's a nice thing.
Yeah, it's a great thing. Yeah.
You will be missed, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, thanks again for everything and, uh, you'll be missed, but, you know, I, I get it. You got to do what's right for you, so.
Eric, what are you going to do without me? Who are you going to debate with? Eric and I always end our meetings on, let's just agree to disagree and, you know.
But, but we have a lot, we have a lot of fun though, don't we?
Yeah, we sure do.
I want to like triple the fact that we'll miss you.
Thank you, Hillary. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Amazing what you got done in a short three years.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. You have helped us so much in so many ways. Like, I just texted a friend to say I want to cry right now.
Aw, don't cry, don't cry.
I mean, we're, we're good for another ten years because you were able to push through a plan of conservation and development. Will probably take all ten years.
Listen, I, um, actually already have a, a very large list going of things that I have to keep going. And one of them is an update in the next year or so. I think we talked about sidewalks or something. You know, there's a lot more things that we have to work on. So, uh, yeah.
Got a couple.
You know what? But it's, you know, piecemeal. We, we just, we just keep doing it, you know? One foot in front of the other and, you know, little bit at a time and it gets done. That's planning, right?
Yeah. Well, you'll still have family in the area, right? So you'll be back periodically.
I'll make sure that, uh, I stop in and say hello at town hall.
Yeah, maybe we can go to, uh, Paul's place and get a grinder and a glass.
They'll be serving some lovely craft beer by then and I'm certainly down for that.
Uh, thank you. Kyle, do you have a zoning official report?
I do. Um, again, another busy month, did about six houses. Um, you know, typical sheds, decks, pools are still in that season. Closing out some older complaints. As Liz mentioned, we have a new application we were Steve tonight for Jacob Gere to construct his new facility on Fairway Drive. The fourteen ninety-six Route twelve, um, I sent a message to the, the business owner and the property owner today. Um, I'm trying to meet with them on site, hopefully next week and just explain those violations in person a little bit better. Hopefully we can resolve that without going through the whole enforcement process, but we will see how that goes. The chairman also asked me to look into the outdoor dining permits that were issued last year, um, due to those executive orders expiring this month. So last year we approved three of those. However, I just discovered this week that there was a new bill passed that is essentially going to extend that till May of next year of twenty twenty-two. It's going to be the same format, um, the same restrictions, really. It's not a full site plan review. It's something I can approve administratively. Um, additionally, those permits that were approved last year, they can extend till next year without a reapplication required. So that will take care of us for the summer for any outdoor dining. I know some other towns were, you know, trying to change their zoning regs to allow that. So we will be good till next year, at least on that. I had Deb attach a copy of that bill if anyone wants to read it. I did skim it the other day. Um, but that was the gist of it. Any questions for anyone?
But just a couple. So, um, I think it'd be, uh, useful, um, uh, at some point, you know, in the, in the next couple of months to make sure that we touch base with the people who did pull those, uh, permits for outdoor dining. You know, and just understand if that's something that they want. You, you know, after, after this, is that something that they're going to want next summer? Has this, you know, has this worked for them? Has this been a, a win for it? Or as soon, you know, are they closing up outdoor shop, uh, as soon as they can bring people back inside? Because that would guide us on whether or not we need to take a look at our regulations and understand how to, how to permit that. Because if, if everyone wants to close it up as soon as they're allowed to, then, you know, I don't see any reason to do anything.
You know, it's funny that the three places looking at Kyle's report, Fireside always had that little patio out front. I don't know that they really expanded that into the parking lot. They're still up on, uh, up on the curb like they've always been, I think. Triple B, he had talked to us when he first opened up that he wanted to do outside, but he wasn't ready at that time. So I mean, that, that's good. Parks Place, I don't think I've ever seen anybody sitting outside of Parks Place. So I, I don't know.
So yeah, Parks Place did have some picnic tables that are existing. Um, they didn't really expand much. They might have added one or two tables. In the fireside, one or two tables. Um, the triple B is probably the largest one. They added some tables in the parking lot. So they put something to protect from traffic. But yeah, no one really added anything huge that wasn't existing. They just kind of added on to what they had already.
Yeah.
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 I actually saw, whoop, I'm sorry. Um, I actually saw Loco Yoko, um, they have picnic tables out, uh, on the south side of their opening there, you know, their, their facilities that they're opening. I did, I saw some picnic tables there, so.
They do. We went there both days of their first opening days and they've got pigment tables out.
Yeah.
But you know, the, the outfit that was there before them, uh, if you remember back to, I think it was Voodoo Bar or something at the time, they had outside seating between them and, uh, LeBlanc's Auto, so it's probably the same place.
All right. So you mean, I, I'll check what site the site plan has for them. They may need to do some kind of temporary permit or maybe in the future, um, something more permanent if it wasn't already existing.
Yeah, and, and for me, it's really just understanding whether or not this is something we need to do a better job of supporting going forward or not. So, yeah, I'm not too concerned about it. Second, uh, question is, I had is, uh, I did get an email, um, about, uh, Blight at forty Blacksmith Drive, uh, which I went and looked in my email and this was, uh, something that was dealt with a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
As well. So this is a, a repeat offense. So I was just going to ask if, uh, you could, uh, take a drive by there in the next couple of weeks. And just check to see if, if, uh, the problem has recurred again. And so I, you know, I, I got a photo. It wasn't clear to me from the photo whether or not there was a, there was a problem or not. So it, but it probably needs a drive-by, um, by you to take a look and see what's going on there and see if, uh, enforcement is needed or not.
Yep, I agree. Um, I didn't get a chance to get out there yet. But typically with stuff like that, I will address it through Blight and zoning if it falls under our junk regs for zoning. But yeah, we'll definitely take care of that.
Great. Appreciate it.
Kyle, I know you looked at Computec before on the corner of, uh, Long Cove and twelve. And he got better for a little bit.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying already. Um, he, he got rid of a couple of cars, but it's, it's, you know, it's just as bad now.
He never, you know, he, he wasn't going to put anything on the back forty, so we didn't require any screening to the guy next door. And.
So the site plan actually shows some abreviate trees, um, I believe it was like a dozen or so. Um, and I don't believe those are ever installed.
No.
And it showed, um, a chain link fence, which I know isn't screening, but, um, you know, there was some stuff that's not on the current property that was shown on the site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and those things probably would help. I'm surprised this neighbor hasn't complained, but you know.
Yep. Yep, uh, that, uh, thanks, Kyle. Excuse me, appreciate it. Uh, any other reports? Uh, Mr. Boudreau, uh, you want to address, uh, the ad hoc committee? Tom? You're, you're muted, Tom. I can't hear you if you're speaking. Uh, okay, I, I'll address it. Um, so the, uh, included the minutes for the last two, uh, ad hoc, uh, uh, committee on ag zoning regs. It, it continues to move forward. Um, I, you know, we're, we're scheduled to wrap up in June. And, uh, Linda Davis made it quite clear that we would be done in June. And so, uh, we will, we will be finishing in June, which means we've only got two more meetings. But, you know, I think, uh, the committee's made pretty good progress, um, and I think, uh, has refined what, uh, you know, we came up with and, and has made it significantly better. And so, um, I think we're going to end up with a proposal out of there, um, in June or July. That will, uh, be picking up, uh, as an application. And so, uh, just included those minutes so that, uh, everyone could see kind of what's going on with that, with that. A- any other reports from regional COG, WPCA or Conservation of things that are of interest to this commission?
Yeah, I can make it quick. We did meet, uh, the regional group, but we didn't have a quorum. So there was four of us.
That's not uncommon, unfortunately.
The new, uh, chairman wasn't even there.
Well played.
Oh, a bit, uh, but like, okay, so to be brief, I think I need to, before we lose you, Liz, I want to hook up and see where we're at with our affordable housing and what, where we're at, because everyone seemed to have a report on that and I didn't. So anyway, there's that and, um, looks like Basra might be getting a data center. They were asking all kinds of questions about what we did when we made our floating reg zone. Then, um, a lot of noise in Groton about their eight hundred apartment development at the Oral School. And, um, yeah, that's, that's the highlights. There's only the four of us, so.
If you want some excitement on the Oral School, next time you call the office, ask Roseanne how she's doing and she'll give you a handful.
Please don't.
She getting, does she live down there?
She lives across the street.
We hear about it often.
I mean, just, just imagine it. You can hear it.
Yeah.
Buy some signs, you know?
I've, I've driven down there all the. I've driven down there. All the all the neighbors have the red signs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, well, Roseanne is their leader for real, so.
Fun. Well, thanks for that, Katie. Anything else from anyone else?
The there are four bills in front of the House and the Senate. I did call my state representative. Ms. Conley and said, well, what do you think? Because she's not playing in development. She wasn't a whole lot of help. I mean, the the long bill is like forty two pages that does just about everything. She said there'll probably only be one bill coming out. They're working on it. There won't be four. And it kind of some of it is things that we talked about when we redid our zoning regs. Detached. Accessory dwelling units. And the problems that we saw were how do you do sewer and how do you do water? And do we really want two residences on one property? The bill as written makes all that buy right. You don't have to worry about sewer, hook up to what you got as long as you don't. Go over a hundred and fifty percent, you're good to go. But it's worth reading to see what they've proposed. I don't know if I have a link. I'll look. I've got a link someplace. I'll send it out to everybody. The the forty two page one is kind of interesting, but it does redo all of eight two.
Yeah.
And and puts. The onus on affordable housing. Where if you're not, if you don't have a plan and you're not working to the plan. You're not going to get a state funding for just about anything. And their idea of affordable is. One step further than we went with our regs. Everything is buy right. So if you want to have an eight unit apartment house, it's buy right in all residential zones or you're not being affordable enough. So. It'll be interesting because most of our impediments to doing that stuff. End up being infrastructure. So we didn't write regs for it because it wasn't doable. But they're worth reading.
Yeah.
I'll I'll send those out.
Thanks. And before we adjourn, I will just say that we will likely try to hold a hybrid meeting in June. So we we got to figure out what the heck that looks like. You know, I I have expressed to the mayor and the the town council that. You know, being able to zoom attendees in is a pretty big advantage for us. I think Eternal Antolina, you know, tonight is a prime example where we can have our land use attorney in a meeting without him needing to spend. Two to three hours driving down to us. And so, you know, being able to to have hybrid meetings is is something that we'll, we're going to try to. Continue for the near future. And so we got to figure out what that technology looks like. You know, I'm not not entirely sure how it'll work, but it is something that that we're pursuing. And so people should expect that. You know, there's not going to be any expectation that people must come to the council chambers for the meeting. It will be hybrid for the next couple of months, but I do think there's an advantage in in starting to figure out, figure out what that is and how that works.
Did everybody get their vaccinations? Yeah, I mean, it it.
I did.
CDC came out today saying if you've been vaccinated. Go for it. No mask. Don't worry about social distancing. I'm sorry, I'm still going to worry about. Masks and social distancing just for the sake of others. You know, the same time they're saying that I I watched the Yankees and the Yankees have. Four of their coaches and one of their players kind of in limbo, even though they've all had. Both shots and the two week period afterwards. And they still got it got the virus, even though they're asymptomatic. They tested positive. So. I don't know if it's a quirk on the test.
Oh, anecdotally, I know. The building official in Groton went on was fully vaccinated, went on vacation with friends of theirs. And they were all fully vaccinated and they got sick and they got actually sick. And they had to quarantine and all that, but he and his wife never got sick, but the couple they were with did and they were vaccinated. Fully Pfizer, so.
I don't know. It's interesting.
Yeah.
Nate, they did hybrid meetings for the for the budget public hearing. And there wasn't a lot of attendance. I mean, if you if you discounted. Town councillors, Board of Education members and people who are on boards or commissions. I think the over under was two.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it it's it's going to be a process and figuring out how to do it. You know, but I. I I think the die is cast, you know, that remote attendance in meetings is is something that's going to happen. And so. The sooner we figure out how to do it well, the better off we are.
I I mean, other than public hearings. This works great for public hearings. I I still like to be able to look somebody in the eye. And get a feeling if if there's some truth behind the statements.
Yeah, it's it it it's not perfect, but yeah, yeah.
I honestly, I think this commission has done an admirable job with these Zoom meetings. You know, I think, you know, with Deb being able to share the screen and show maps like tonight. I think everyone's done really, really well and adopted really well. I I kind of, you know, I I find that. As staff. You know, certainly if we have four or five people like meeting with our our Ledger Center sewer feasibility study folks. We have enough room to have a meeting, but how much more efficient is it when we can all just zoom from our offices rather than have them drive from Rocky Hill, Connecticut? And then everybody has to show up and everyone's on time and, you know, a little chit chat. This way, boom, the meeting's going. We take off with the meeting. I find it to be, I I actually find it to be much more efficient. So. I I frankly hope that more of these Zoom meetings will continue for, you know, regular working days. I don't know about you, the rest of you, but.
No, I I agree. I mean, I I think it's, you know, look, no matter what, it's, you know, forty minutes less driving for everybody. You know, twenty minutes in and out, that's just lost time. And so there's no question about it. And especially, you know, staff, look, you guys have worked a full day and then you get to come back in. And so it's it's nice for you guys to be able to do it.
Or or sit and stay. I mean, I I've had conversations with previous mayors and previous planners. If the planner is there. Waiting for a seven o'clock meeting. And working during that three hours, they should be paid, you know.
Well, that was me for the first two years because you're not going to leave at five thirty, go home and turn around and come back. So I was. You know, I always sat, you know, I I always worked until the meeting. So yeah, it's kind of nice to be able to and then drive home at whatever time we're done. No offense, Eric. Sometimes I'll say too long. We ended up going back in person. I'm sorry, Mike.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, you know, as show of conservation, we voted this month to go back in person next month. But I want to keep a Zoom option up. Because I think it will make it easier for a lot of people to show up and give their feedback. And I think that's something that has really encouraged people the last year to show up to meetings. Because they suddenly had time without that driving time.
Yeah.
And so that's something that's important to me to keep up. Even though I personally am dying to see people on my commission, you know.
I lost forty pounds. I'm half of what I used to be now. What do we know about notices and newspapers and stuff? Is that going to stay online or?
Well, we don't. We don't know yet. Now, I was speaking to the mayor and I really have been too busy in the last couple of days to follow up, but May nineteenth is when the. Governor's order was extended to. I heard from the mayor that the house, I think it was Monday. Voted to extend the governor's emergency powers to July nineteenth. I do not know where it went from there.
All right. So at least that covers us for our upcoming public hearings and we're still good.
Right. So right now we can still advertise on the website until. May nineteenth. Now, what we have been doing, as you know, is if we are able to advertise on the website, we don't take the public hearing fee in now.
Yeah.
Policy the commission since COVID began. What we're doing now is, you know, if we're sort of in the middle and we have to notice something in the paper, we're we're clearly going to have to take the fee.
Yeah.
But you know, the problem is is they don't make a decision. I was talking with Deb today. She said they'll make a decision next Wednesday morning. I mean, I mean, that's that's the way it feels like. We don't know what the decision is going to be on these notices. Until almost like the day before. So, you know, it'll come out on the listserv. It'll, you know, everyone will hear about it, but. You know, that that's that's how we find out, you know. So we'll let you know, but we are keeping an eye on it.
Thank you.
All right, with that and without objection, I will adjourn this regular meeting of the Plan Zoning Commission at nine twenty PM.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Good luck, Liz.
Good meeting tonight.
Y'all set, Deb? Great. Thank you very much. Have a good night.